It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, review and approve council agenda. Approve?
Second.
Play through some additions.
No, you don't need, they're on, they're on a regular agenda item.
Got a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, consent agenda items. Item A. That should be approved twelve two nineteen city council meeting minutes. Item B, approved twelve sixteen nineteen city council meeting minutes. Item C, approved twelve eighteen nineteen city council emergency meeting minutes. Item D, approved twenty nineteen body worn camera audit. Item E, approved twenty nineteen city emergency operations plan approval. Item F, approved change order number six, Rivers Edge Park Phase Three. Item G, approved offsite gambling license for the Saint Cloud Boxing and Wrestling Club. Item H, approve election judges for the presidential nominating primary. Item I, approve resolution to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the retirement plan. Item J, purchase two new police vehicles for the police department. Item K, approve fire department on-call rates. And item L, approve resolution, approve gambling premise permit for Crooked Pint Ale House.
I'd like to poll F.
Which one?
F.
Yep, I'd like to do J then, I'd F also.
I'm gonna poll A.
F is?
Mike.
And J?
And J?
J is Mike.
Mike.
Those three, somebody wanna move to approve, uh, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, K, L. Move to approve?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, uh, Ken, item A, somebody wanna move to approve item A?
So move.
I think you were, oh, weren't you?
There's a correction.
Oh, there is.
The only thing I wanted to change is, uh, in the minutes under, um, item number three council agenda, it needs to read Mayor Miller instead of Mayor Mill.
There you go. Somebody wanna move to approve as amended?
So move.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, item F, Mike or Frank?
Um, that change order, I just wanted to make sure we, is that sprinkler system we paid to install and then we're paying to cap it off? That change order is five hundred bucks.
Yeah, here's what I'll tell ya, there's an area between the two fields. And we did put some sprinkler heads to spray that area between the two fields. Long term, that area is intended to be concrete.
No, it's not, we, uh, said no.
Long term it is, uh, not in this phase, uh, but the, the, the long term plans call for that to be concrete through the two fields. It was felt like, um, I, I think when we met with the Babe Ruth people, that, um, it didn't...
Sprinkled?
Causing some moisture problems. So, looking at it long term, we didn't need it. In short term, the Babe Ruth people said, we'd rather not have it.
So, how did, what did they do, pull it all out?
My understanding is they took the head off.
Capted it.
And that cost five hundred dollars to put in a half a dozen plugs.
Remove the heads.
Oh, gosh, they have to unscrew them.
I'm gonna move to approve F.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, item J, Mike.
Um, on these two squad cars, are we replacing or are we adding on to the fleet? And I don't see them here.
They're replacements, aren't they?
They are replacements that were in the budget, yeah. Dave is on vacation, so, um, that's about all I can tell you about them is that they were...
We're not adding, we're replacing the, the ones that are there.
Move to approve it.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, regular agenda items. Item A, consider Astoria Hotel License Renewal. Mr. Howell.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, currently, I'm just gonna review, go over what the council's actions were on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, and that was when the, uh, action was taken by the council. It was license revocation for ninety days beginning June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Number two on the deal was, uh, nine month probation period during which time the property will be inspected monthly by the Stearns County Health Department, the City Building Department, and the City Police Department. And number three, all inspection costs be borne by the property owner. Currently this time, at this time, the, uh, the, uh, property has made the following repairs in the east building, the main building. The roof has been repaired, uh, all mold has been abated by Service Master. Uh, the asbestos in the affected rooms, uh, had been abated by, uh, Service Master's licensed subcontractor. Uh, the ceilings and walls have been replaced or repaired, the fire alarm panel has been replaced. The state fire marshal has inspected the hotel's east building, and they've got some, they had some violations, which, uh, a number of them have been already completed. The items that haven't been completed yet, uh, which is the, uh, the documentation, the emergency evacuation drills, which they haven't had any customers yet, so that's, once they, have some people, they'll have to do that. Uh, they got some extension cords that, uh, still need to be, uh, taken out. And then they've got some, uh, emergency lighting things that they've got sixty and, sixty days, and then they've got a, a fire, or all the doors to close and latch, they've got ninety days to, uh, all the doors have to close and latch, they've got nine, the state fire marshal gave them ninety days to make that correction. The only thing is, they were all pegged open for us to walk through, so I think, uh, we just didn't want to test them all. I believe that when we went through them, they all, they all worked. That was prior to the state fire marshal coming through, so I am confident that that will work, to be done. Uh, the, uh, hotel's west building is currently empty and cannot be used at this time, and it'll require some renovation and updating before use. Uh, the only rooms that are gonna be available for rent, uh, are in the east building. There are a couple of, uh, broken windows, uh, those orders are on, those windows are on order, and, uh, those rooms won't be, if you approve the license, those rooms will not be rented until such time as the windows are replaced.
Those in the west or the east?
Those are in the east building. We did not even go through the west building. But he does have the, the, I do have a copy of the, of the order form on, he's got the, he's got the, all those windows on, on order, I've got the invoice in my hand, so. So, there's a, uh, yeah, most of the stuff, everything that we, we went through, uh, last week, most of the stuff has been completed. Very minor things are left to do, but I, uh, there's nothing that, uh, would prevent anyone from having a comfortable stay out there, I would believe, so. Uh, there are some, I, I don't know, there, I'll just stand here, you got any questions, before I go and dig myself any deeper hole?
On our, uh, first suspension was ninety days or upon completion of all work to the motel, all work. All work is not complete, so I don't feel that we have to go much farther until the work is complete, period. And secondly, believe that included the west motel as long, along with the east motel.
Yeah, we didn't separate them out.
We didn't separate them out. End of story, I think.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I'm not gonna approve that license, uh, I got windows missing even on the east one, they still have stuff to do. I hate to say it, but that's got, you got a bad reputation, and I'm not, I, you know, shame on me the first time, shame on you the first time, shame on me the second time, and I think this is about the fifteenth time for that facility, not just under your name, but I won't approve this either unless it's done, and I, I agree, it's all, it's all or none. I, I know what's gonna happen if we open up half of it and the other half is a, is a junk yet, I, I, no, I, I won't approve that either. Anybody else, any council discussion?
Well, I think I totally agree with you, you know, we talked about getting everything done on it, and I think that's the direction we need to go.
Hate to say it, but that kinda made your own bed there.
Somebody wanna move to deny that?
I'll move to deny.
Well. I'll second.
Further discussion, go ahead if you wanna say anything.
Well, I, I will say that, uh, there is, you know, I should let them speak for themselves, but I will say that they've done, uh, a lot of work on that, the main building, uh, and I will, and I think it's, I think it's ready to go, I mean, the, the items that are left, uh, are on order as far as the windows go, other than that, uh, but I, I will say that that he, and I'll let him speak for himself, but, uh, that west building, I don't know if it'll ever open.
Then I think it needs to be knocked down.
Well.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll retract my motion, we'll let him speak, and then we'll redo the motion, if need be.
No, it's part of the discussion, Mike, you're okay.
Yeah, it's just a...
Yeah, it's all right, you can have discussion, you're still good.
Yeah, hello everyone, yeah, that's what I told Mr. Howell, that I don't know if I'm gonna ever open the second building or not, most probably, because that's where most of my problem was, that's why I haven't done any work to it, and we take out most of the stuff from that building, it's pretty much empty, there's nothing there except for the lights going on. So, at this point, I, eighty percent, I'm not gonna open it. And most of the work that was, the only thing, I have one extension cord behind the pop machine, that we tried to move the machine today, we couldn't move it, it's just extension cord that we need to move, and three windows, that's cracked, it's not completely out or anything, it just cracked, and it, windows, the glass is coming at the glass company tomorrow, they said it should be done by Friday. And two emergency lights that the fire marshal want extra, he gave me ninety days, but if he wanted to get it done, I can get it done within the next couple of days, it's not the problem, so, that's the only three things that's not done in that other building.
There was emergency lighting?
There is emergency lights, he just want it's two extra. It's not that it's not working or need to be replaced or anything, it's, he wanted added two extra lights to it.
There's, the, the state fire marshal was concerned with the emergency lights that were there and operating, we didn't have a good way to test it because it was light out, uh, there's a shift in the hallway where it, it takes a little bit of a jog over, he's just concerned that it might not shine down the corridor and light up enough, so he just wanted to...
He said just add extra one more light, so.
Just add an extra one on each level, and that's why...
And I can get it done and move the extension cord, we tried to do it us two, and we couldn't move the machine to pull the extension cord out today.
All right, I have a motion and a second to deny the request, I would, I would still hold that to be self-evident, to be true, uh...
I, I got a question.
And all these, when all these issues are taken care of, and when you have a plan to demolish, or otherwise, when that building, the west building's demolished, come back and see us, but I'm not gonna open up, uh, a motel with one side of it that's questionable whether it can open right now, and the other side looking like a, a dump, I, I'm not gonna approve that.
How, what do, how do we ensure what becomes of that building if we don't do it now?
That's exactly...
We, there's gotta be a plan, either, 'cause it's just gonna deteriorate, and it's gonna be worse than it ever was.
I guess my recommendation would be is, when he comes back to reapply for, if this gets denied, that he has a plan for that building, whether he's going to remodel or demolish that building.
Remove it.
And not an eighty percent chance of it, I wanna see either the, the work, the work order that says John's contractor's gonna do it, or John, John's contractor's gonna knock it down within so many days.
Can you give me like sixty days or something for...
You can come back at any time.
You can come back anytime now, but I'm not gonna open it up even for sixty days, until this is all done.
No, but once I bring the contract to demolish the building, can I open the other building or no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not without a plan to take, doing something with the west building.
You will have to come back, you will have to come back to the council if they move forward with this motion for that, for them to approve that, but they're willing to have you come back, but you may have to, once you have your plan, from what I'm hearing, what they're saying is that they want you to develop that plan before they're going to renew your hotel license.
And I do believe that's what he was asking, if he's got the documentation to say what he's going to do, then he can come back and we can get things moving along.
That is up to you, I mean, are you gonna make it be physically...
The east building, the east building should be one hundred percent livable.
Yep.
And the west building, if it's not livable, we, you should have a contract in hand that says that somebody's gonna knock it down within sixty days, we can say, we, we're not gonna prove it until you knock it down, we, I don't know if anybody will bend to a sixty day contract to knock it down or not, that you'll have to worry about when you bring it back, if you knock it down, you don't have to worry about it.
Or a plan to remodel it up to specs.
With a timeframe.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, motion to second, more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, permit, license is denied. Item B, sales tax roads criteria.
Essentially what you have before you, um, when we have talked about looking at, um, renewing, um, or adding an additional sales tax, uh, we've talked a lot about road projects and things like that, we have an existing sales tax, um, what you have before you is just really the road that shows kind of how we've determined over the years of how we've determined what, uh, what constitute a regional road, um, and so we just felt that it would be a good idea for us to, to go ahead and formalize that, um, so that it's clear, um, that it's being done, the criteria that is, um, used is similar to what we've used, um, for our mains with our snow plowing, they seem to correlate really well because our main roads are the ones that we choose to utilize first, so, unless you have any specific questions, um, that's really the, the only action that we're asking for.
I do have just one quick one.
Sure.
We cannot include any infrastructure in these, such as adding sewer and water out.
Replacement?
Not a replacement, but to enhance, extend what we have.
The only way...
Temple would be the south end.
So, let me just clarify, what, what this action is before you is really just, um, putting the distinction on roadways that are regional, this isn't the resolution, um, talking about the specific projects, if that's what you're thinking, that have to do with this, so what we're looking at here is just, just identifying our roadways within our community that are regional in significance.
Well, this isn't what is going to go...
This is not the, this is, that's the next item, that's the next item, Mike.
Just surface work or pipes too.
Is it possible, Sean, to put that map up? Not really, that's fine, I do wanna make one clarification, on the map, it shows that First Avenue, um, south between Division and twenty-three is a county-state road, that's an air, um, I will clean that up, that should not be blue on that map, so, I need to make that distinction, the other thing is that, like Sean had said, that the main criteria for the, for the state aid, or for sales tax roads is what we plow for mains, which takes into account anything that's posed by a school, it's a state aid road that we have determined, um, is it a major or minor arterial, major or minor collector, and also is it a bus route, um, so those are the criterias that we came up with, that the Public Works Department works off of, and that'll fit well for your, for your next discussion on your sales tax roads, if you have any other questions, then feel free to answer them.
All right, Council, your wishes?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, now we got, uh, consider resolution on additional sales tax.
So, Mike, this might be where you were asking your question about, um, infrastructure, um, and the direction that I have gotten from, um, Flaherty and Hood on this is that it, um, has to be, i-if there was, if our, if our regional, or if our, um, infrastructure was serving, so like if our water lines or sewer lines were serving not just our city, but the area cities to be able to do that, and that we're paying for that, we could utilize something like that, um, but, um, we can't use it for replacing our existing, um, infrastructure, it really has to be towards capital projects, typically those are streets, um, or community facility, parks, trails, those kinds of things, that the intention for those dollars is not for that, and I see, I, I appreciate you trying to get, but I, they, they, they told us no.
Well, just thinking, you know, we're, we're gonna use it for trail, trail connections, so on and so forth, um, we're talking about a southside regional park development, that type of thing, if we have to expand out to these specific things that we have as a regional project, to provide services for that project, can that be part of the...
I would think that if we're developing a park, that the infra, the utilities is part of that actual park within that park, could be utilized for that, but probably not extending it from...
Not the mile in between that we gotta put it in.
Right, it would be the, the utilities that would be needed to develop that park, but we could not be the mile in between for those utilities.
Okay, all right, anybody else?
Just trying to, trying to cover the gray areas that we, uh...
I appreciate it, and so, what you have before you are, um, the projects that we have talked about, um, and tried to develop, and so, we have a Tenth Avenue Regional Corridor, um, we have it up to fifteen point five million dollars, um, the specific language that you see in here are the specific criteria that were required, um, under the legislation, um, you have to identify the amount of years and the dollar amounts to be collected, and so you see up to nine years, um, for fifteen point five million, that would be if all of our projected sales tax revenue was going towards that one individual project, it would take us nine years, because each one of these, um, if they're approved at the legislature, would be then part of a referendum that would be voted on individually by each of, you know, our, our, um, our voters, and so there's going to be, you have to look at them as really kind of individual sales tax projects within one referendum. And so then the next one is regional trail connections, up to ten million dollars to be collected for over five years, southside regional park development, up to ten million to be collected over five years, public safety facility, up to twelve million to be collected over six years, and then as you see as an exhibit, um, it gives the regional significance, which was something that needed to be included as part of that resolution, um, and so that's, this has been reviewed by Flaherty and Hood, um, and we've made the revisions that they had requested, um, so I believe that it lays out everything that, that we need to, to meet that, if this is so your direction, you certainly can, you know, you can comment about the projects, I know we've had a lot of discussion about that, but, um, they feel very confident that what we've put forward is really following what the legislature truly intended to do for those dollars.
Wanna move to approve, uh, Resolution oh one two seven two zero dash zero two?
Make that motion?
Four, oh, it says...
Oh, is it number four, not two? Okay.
Move to approve it, I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right, item D, twenty twenty street improvement plan.
Your, our Council, uh, the, uh, action tonight is approval of what we're calling the Wade Park, uh, twenty twenty street improvement project, it includes the three sections on the cover sheet that you see on the, um, attachment to your agenda, section A being, that portion that is, uh, what we call Second Street North and West Avenue, um, section B being Granite View Road, originally intended to be constructed in twenty nineteen, moved to twenty twenty, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and then, uh, section C, uh, Parkway Bus Drive, or Bus Bay, um, it's a bus bay at the amphitheater to accommodate, um, bus traffic. I don't think I'll go through each sheet, but, uh, this sheet in particular is kind of a nice, uh, summary, thank you, how'd you do that?
That's Brad.
That's me, that's magic, Waska.
That's kinda spooky, so, uh, section A, as I mentioned, Second Street North, uh, from Second Avenue to Wade Avenue, uh, that street does not presently have any curb and gutter or drainage improvements, uh, we are going to be replacing the sanitary sewer and the water, uh, along the whole project, uh, the length of, uh, Second Street and the length of West Avenue, um, what you're seeing here is the sanitary sewer and the water improvements, uh, I have highlighted a couple of easements that we need to get yet, um, Bitson, Lee Chin, Lukazek, and... Trying to think of that name, uh, used to be owned by the bank, um, it's a notch, I think. No?
No, a notch is across the road.
We have notch. Denny? Denny could be, at any rate, used to be owned by US Bank, um, and so, I, I can tell you, uh, we have negotiated the, the Bitson easement, I think it's a matter of just getting signatures, and the other three, I know Paul's office is working in earnest on, I've, I've personally made some calls to Lukazek, I can't get a, a reply back, and I know they've sent letters, so, uh, the second sheet that you see there...
Eric, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are you gonna put full curb in here, or are we gonna do a half?
Yeah, you're one step ahead of me, we are gonna put, uh, curb in here, uh, no sidewalk, uh, but I'll get to the typical section here in just a minute.
The reason I ask, wouldn't a half curb maybe work better in this portion of town?
What you mean by a half curb?
You mean the rollover curb? The rollover curb, or whatever you call it.
Uh...
No, no.
I also had to do his look over bill, uh, they're not, uh, Public Works people are not generally a fan of that, uh, you know, the, the snow plows tend to ride up on them and, and, and cause some damage here, so, uh, we're, we're going with our standard, what we call B six eighteen curb, um, so, on the storm sewer, uh, we do have, uh, new storm sewer regulations, uh, we need to put in one of those infiltration units, uh, for treatment, and, uh, so we're, we're planning that within the street right of way, buried, obviously, under the, uh, under the surface, uh, you can see the storm sewer system, we've got some collection that's happening in the, what we call Frontage Road, along BNSF, much to the great cheer of the Public Works Department, that, that area doesn't drain well right now, so, I think that'll be good, um, Mike, you had mentioned the typical section. Uh, Second Street North will be thirty-two feet wide, which is kind of our typical residential street width, uh, face a curb to face a curb. Uh, West Avenue being a cul-de-sac, um, we went with a, a, um, excuse me, down here, thirty-foot wide, uh, typical section. The Frontage Road, uh, that area along the Burlington Northern Tracks, uh, twelve-foot wide paved, um, essentially alleyway. I don't think I'll go through the detailed sheets. If you have any questions on the other sheets on the Second Street North and West Avenue.
Second Street, Terry.
Yes.
Uh, are we doing one-side parking, or are we doing go-ahead and park? Both sides?
Uh, thirty-two feet will, uh, accommodate essentially three lanes. Uh, and so you always wanna have two-way traffic. Typically, I, I, a, uh, we don't restrict parking on those streets. And, and we're, we're gonna have to see how this works. Because, uh, you know, if, obviously if you've got people parked on both sides, uh, then, then there's a problem with two-way traffic. Uh, most of the streets, we generally don't have a problem. If we get to the point here, I think, uh, where we see regularly people are parking exact opposite on both sides, uh, then I would say we need to look at restricting parking to one side.
So we'll monitor it, monitor it to see if it's gonna work and.
Yeah.
To be determined.
Be determined.
Yep. Also, Terry, do you wanna talk about the phasing?
Yeah, uh, page sixteen on your, on your plan sheet, uh, because access here is gonna be somewhat precarious, uh, with all the underground stuff going on, uh, the first phase of construction is planned from West Avenue, or excuse me, Wade Avenue to First Avenue. Uh, we wanna get the, uh, first base course, course bituminous on that before we open up the second phase, um, so that people aren't totally blocked off in this neighborhood.
What's the projected construction time?
Well, uh, I would say here that this is probably, uh, about three months. I would say about three months. So I, I mean, if we can get in here, uh, and, as you know, we got several sections here, if we can get in here in, in May, you know, it's conceivable we could be done by, by the end of July. But they may opt to put that, you know, June to September.
So it doesn't rain for ninety days and?
What's that?
It doesn't rain for ninety days and?
And last summer, it just kinda threw everything, yeah. I'm glad we weren't building this last year. Uh, this would've been a mess. The one, one other thing I wanna mention, and I, I didn't, uh, we are doing a little bit of widening at the Wade Avenue intersection to allow for a straight-through, a right turn, and, excuse me, a right turn and a straight-through and a left, and then straight-through on the other direction. So, um, we are having actually three lanes of traffic and, and no parking in that, in that first couple hundred feet there. So that, uh, it lines up with the, uh, traffic signal and the lanes across the street.
Terry, was there some modifications to the traffic control?
Yes, there is. Uh, there's some modifications to the traffic control system, uh, getting it up to ADA, uh, standards with regard to push buttons, uh, sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, and, uh, lining up the heads, uh, so that, so there are some modifications to the traffic signal on Wade as well.
I'd like to also add too, Terry, with, with, uh, this area to Excel Energy, for sure is gonna be doing some modifications out there with some of the utilities. And they wanna get going as soon as possible, so you might even see some work being done yet soon here, ahead of us, which is a good thing.
Okay, I'll go to the, uh, Grandview Drive.
Just a quick question on West Avenue.
Excuse me, Grandview Road.
Is that gonna stop that water from flowing into that homeowner on the end by the Frontage Road? That's a real problem for him, yes, thank you.
Okay, Grandview Road, uh, is a reconstruction of, uh, Grandview Ray, Road from, uh, s- south of the roundabouts to County Road Six. Uh, presently exists as a rural section. I would call it twenty-plus feet wide road, um, maybe twenty-one would be generous. Uh, we are going to do what we call a full-depth reclamation on that, uh, segment of roadway, where we grind up the existing bituminous and base, uh, compact it, lay it down, put it to grade, uh, essentially building a new road on top of that. Uh, eight inches of gravel, three and a half inches of bituminous. Uh, we will have a twenty-four-foot wide bituminous surface, uh, with a two-foot gravel shoulder on each side and four-to-one slopes down to the ditch. It's gonna remain a, what we call a rural section roadway. Just going through this, uh, the main thing that I think I've talked to you about in the past, this is the, uh, connection to County Road Six. Uh, we do have a, a ditch crossing there that we were not touching, just north of County Road Six. Uh, the main thing that I think I've talked to you about here is the crossing of the ditch, which we discovered was a trout stream? Or a branch of a trout stream is what I should say. So, update on that, that's kind of essentially what pushed this project from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty. We filed permit applications with the DNR. I, I think we have negotiated a, a solution, uh, with them. Uh, the solution involves a one-hundred-and-two-inch wide-span, uh, concrete culvert with two-twenty-one-inch column, uh, relief culverts, uh, installed alongside of it. Uh, the culvert will actually be buried somewhat, the bottom of the culvert, to, um, replicate, uh, stream conditions. And so, um, when you see these go in and you say, why are you burying that culvert? Please know that that's on purpose.
Do you have to put the rocks back in order? In that stretch? To make it, uh, permissible by the DNR?
We're gonna be careful about, uh, about our stream bed.
This wouldn't be a, this would be a typical SEH culvert they put in full of dirt, right?
You just get it all out of your system, you won't have me to kick around much longer.
Well, it's your job to put the puzzle back together there, isn't it?
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're doing. That's, that's why we're here. So, uh, the status of that is, uh, and I get reports from my, uh, natural resources guy every week. The last report is, uh, they're doing a findings of fact, we had answered a bunch of questions for them. And I think that, what that means is that hopefully the permanent, or, or easement is imminent. So, uh, tonight's action actually will be approval of plans and specifications contingent upon, uh, approval of the permitting process.
So with that culvert, we're basically doing what the DNR wanted?
That's what we're hoping for.
Could've been a lot more expensive.
Well, I thought we were initially hoping to just add on to each side of that culvert.
Yeah, that was our initial, uh, well, our, actually our initial was to replace, uh, the culvert as is. Their initial thought was to put a bottomless bridge over the top of that. And I think we, we compromised on a, a wider, uh, culvert that, that simulated the stream conditions. So, uh, essentially that's that project. The bus terminal, or the bus garage, or bus garage, bus terminal, yeah, the bus turnout. Uh, you've seen previously, uh, we actually did do some quotes on this last summer. I think due to the timing, uh, and the small nature of the project, it, it was more expensive than what we would normally see. Uh, I think we'll get a better, uh, price packaging this with the, uh, the rest of the work.
Terry, what's the total length of that?
I wanna say, I was looking at that, Mike, I, I'd say this is about three hundred feet.
Oh, that big?
Yeah.
Hopefully as long as they can make it.
Well, it goes from two plus, yeah, it's, it's, it's maybe about two-hundred-and-fifty, the full, the full width is about two-hundred-and-fifty feet. The full length here, if you include the tapers, is about three-hundred-and-fifty feet. Um, the estimated, uh, project cost here, total of the three sections, uh, we're estimating a, uh, a cost of two-point-one million dollars.
All right, somebody wanna? Somebody wanna move to approve, uh, the plans and specs for twenty-twenty Street Improvement Projects?
So move.
Second. Further discussion.
Contingent about the, the DNR permit.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thanks, Terry. Item E, Ordinance Amending Section twenty-two dot two of Ordinance twenty-two, Civil Service Board.
What you have before you, um, and what we have done typically when we, uh, create a new position, and typically when they're a salary position, um, we have them exempt from our Civil Service Board. So what you have before you is the amendment to the Civil Service Board ordinance that would reflect the Facility Events Coordinator to be added to that. And it, the only time that you can really do that is at the time, um, when you've created that position and before you're doing your hiring.
And a couple other thing changes from Superintendent Public Works to Public Works Director and Eliminating Building and Planning Coordinator.
Because we don't have that, yeah, we don't have those positions anymore, so it's just cleaning that piece up. Yep.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item F, Consider Position Appointments.
So what you have before you are three different positions. Um, you have the Administrative Associate, Fire Captain since Facility Event Coordinator positions. Council, you've done interviews of all of those, and I know, I think you're prepared to make a motion. I would recommend that you make each individual one.
Then vote on that individual.
Yep. How about we do, let's see, do we got them in order, let's do the Administrative Assistant first, and that's. You got that one, Vic?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to appoint, um, Heidi Freaking to the administrative position, uh, pay grade four, step four, uh, with ten days vacation, uh, pending successful completion of the background check and extending the eligibility list to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, Fire Captain.
I'll move to appoint Jeff Jason Erzie to captain.
I'll second.
To fill the term.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, through twenty-twenty, I do believe, right?
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, Facility Event Coordinator.
I'd make a motion to appoint, um, Meredith Lyon to the, um, Event Coordinator position at pay grade eight, step one, with fifteen days vacation, pending successful completion of the background check. Maintain the eligibility list till July thirty-one, twenty-twenty.
Do you wanna do the, did you wanna do the six-month?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I included six-month evaluation, uh, which would move her to pay grade eight, step two.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Four to one. Think you got the wrong person. All right, Council Mayor, approve bills.
I have a question on the bills. What's, um, vehicle number two-oh-eight, a bill was for ten-forty Ford for a water pump for five thousand eight hundred and something dollars?
Not a wat, not for five thousand for a water pump, water pump, holy crap.
For five thousand dollars?
What is the vehicle number?
Two-oh-one.
Vehicle number is two-oh-eight.
We'll follow up with Dave.
Well, maybe the decimal wasn't around plus five.
No, that's a lot of money for that.
When I seen it, so someone check it out.
Yeah.
Get back to me.
Wasn't, wasn't a fire truck, was it?
Fifty, I swear it was fifty-eight hundred dollars.
That's a lot of money for that, yeah.
It was five-hundred-and-eighty, like you said, maybe it was, maybe a decimal point.
Dave is on vacation, I think he comes back either Wednesday or Thursday, I'll follow up with him.
Five-eighty would sound about right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm pretty sure I read it right, so see what the check says.
I got it now. All right.
All right, we'll check on that.
A second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Did we have a motion and a second?
No, I didn't catch that.
Who made it?
You did, just with the correction.
Oh, all right.
And who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good.
I think he's putting words in my mouth, but well, go with it.
Anyway, it passes five to nothing. I did get a thank you card from the Boys and Girls Club for our donation that we give them. So, uh, got that. Also got a thank you letter from the Paramount, uh, Center for the Arts for the donation we gave to them. And the Area Planning Organization gave us this, this, uh, plaque, whatever, I guess, desk weight, paper weight. Uh, this is for all the years that the APO has used the city council chambers, uh, for their monthly meetings or quarterly meetings, it depended if they were monthly or quarterly for all of the APOs. So we did that for quite a few years, I don't know, five, six, seven, maybe even eight or nine, ten, it, it was a long time. So anyway, they gave us this plaque because now we meet at the, uh, library. Uh, let's see, that's all I got. That's all I got.
Okay, just a few things and I'll send this out, but the Coalition, um, their lobbying day will be coming up, it's in March. Um, so we'll, uh, get that information out to you. I think the Leagues is also, they're not the same week, I think they're opposite.
But they're both in March, aren't they?
I think they both are. Uh, the legislative, like, goes into session on the tenth of, um, February. And then our next council meeting that we were looking at doing would have been, will be the, the day after President's Day, if that works out for everyone.
That'll be a Tuesday night?
It's a Tuesday.
Oh, the day after, not the week.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my calendar in front of me, it's the eighteenth, Carla.
It's February eighteenth.
Eighteenth, it's a Tuesday, if that works. If it doesn't, we can always look at that, but we're looking at just doing that one meeting and so we would not need to have a meeting, um, next Monday, being we are met today with the, the number of things we've had going on. And no State of the Cities address in February.
All right.
All right, anybody, anything else? Terry? Bill? John?
Oh, sir.
Uh, let's go to Paul first. See, I caught you off-guard, Keith? Carla? Adrian? Oh, come on. We are adjourned at seven-eighteen.